Well, good evening. Thank you for coming to this special meeting of the Apple Valley County Council on its successor agency on October 16th, 2018 at 6:32. Yes, 6:32. We want to thank you all for coming this evening. Public participation in this meeting, and our meeting is invited if you please go fill out the speaker cards, the yellow cards I'm holding here. They go to the young lady to my very, very far right. A little different, but well, the young lady at the far table. And if we could, please have a roll call.
Councilor number Imit.
Here.
Councilor number Nassim.
Here.
Councilor number Danny.
Here.
Mayor Phil Hill-Husak.
Here.
Mayor Bishop.
Here. And I would ask if our short timer is what we recall her in the military for previously scheduled.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Place your hand over your heart.
Aye.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks, man. Well, thanks, man. But I'm going to let you do that one more time. That is Tennessee. Moving on to public comments. I do have a number of public comment cards, so I think I would ask Mr. Rice, our attorney, to please, if he could explain how these public comment portion will work.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Because this is a special meeting, the only business before the council is the one action.
You got me up to it.
The one action on council's agenda tonight is the water update, so all special, all public comments limited to that item. Regular action about council business would be presented as a regular.
Clear everyone here.
No.
I didn't think so. Because I was having, he's going to try and adjust him.
Let me give him my microphone.
There you go. Just speak, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
There we go, Thomas. Right into it. Thank you, Ben, for helping us.
Thank you, Ben.
He's cranking it. So try it now, Thomas, and see if there's a difference.
Okay, so because this is a special meeting of the town council, the only business of the council is the item that is on the agenda tonight, which is the water update. No other town business can be considered at tonight's meeting. That includes acting on public comment beyond the items on the agenda. So just want to let people know to keep their comments limited to what's on the agenda tonight. If they have other actions or concerns about council business, members of the public can come to the next town council meeting next Tuesday night, or speak with a member of council tonight, if they can maybe help out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next meeting is next Tuesday night on the 21st of and I know we have some more cards coming, but I want to start with the young lady Diane first. And I know I saw her.
Yes.
Diane, I don't know where she is.
Oh, she's there.
I don't know where she is.
Oh, she's there.
I always wonder where Diane comes from.
Good evening, councilmembers. In preparing my remarks tonight, I had to chuckle at the online video of former Mayor Nassim posted on the town website. Two items struck me. We are taking the water company because consumers are complaining about rates. People are moving out of town. Houses cannot sell. Individuals on fixed incomes cannot manage because of rates. Well, as we're taking the water company, this town claims it's like Missoula, Montana.
Okay.
May I start over?
Yeah.
Okay. Starting over. Is that better?
There we go.
Okay, everyone, hold the mic to your desk. In preparing my remarks tonight, I had to chuckle on the online video of former Mayor Nassim, which is posted on the town website. Two items struck me. We are taking the water company because consumers are complaining about rates. People are moving out of town. Houses cannot sell. Individuals on fixed incomes cannot manage because of the rates. That is interesting because of the comments I'll make later regarding Missoula. The second issue is out of transparency, and I would say the town has been anything but transparent with respect to this water litigation. We haven't really even seen the full cost thereof. And how sad it is we must use town revenues to support a $10 million bond issuance, or whatever we can get in the issuance. If you read the staff report from that meeting, you would know that the only funds available to the town from the $10 million are only $4 million. That's not quite the line of credit I anticipated. And as for the taking of the water company, the town claims it is like the Missoula, Montana case. Although this public relations exercise tonight is more like Clermont. But my kindred spirit in Missoula, Montana, Attorney Quentin Rhodes recently had published in Missoula an article about what's happening there after the condemnation. He says now, three years later, the dust has still not settled on the last of the litigation. We paid about $88 million for the water system, $4 million for the other side's attorneys, $9 million in our own attorneys, and we have $140 million bond issuance, all to buy a water system the mayor told us was worth $50 million. Water rates, one of the chief complaints the city used to justify the condemnation. Remain as high as ever. We still pay the same price we paid for water under private ownership, and now with a new burden of a debt of $140 million. The city has no realistic plans to lower water rates ever. The condemnation of Mountain Water Company was a victory not for good government, not for efficient utilities, or the rate-paying public. It was a victory for lawyers, for expert witnesses, and for foreign bankers. Citizens got left holding the bag. Our water is the same, and our rates are the same, but we owe a huge mountain of debt and have to repay it without the help of what used to be one of our largest taxpayers. I wonder if the folks in California will make the same mistake. Thank you. Welcome to the debt of rate life.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, and I hope everybody had the opportunity to pick up the OK, Greg. Let's all put it like a slide we're on. Now, the next speaker this evening will be Greg Raven.
My name is Greg Raven. I live here in Apple Valley. Last time we met here was back in 2015.
Yeah, more fortunate, huh?
2015, when the town staff, town attorneys, town outside consultants, and dozens of concerned citizens spent hundreds of hours trying to get sense of the environmental impact reported in the Apple Valley Ranchers water system acquisition project. You were sure this back then that this process was necessary. In fact, the town council delayed voting to proceed with the acquisition until after the receipt of the final version of this report. Unfortunately, the town, its attorneys, and its consultants failed to heed input from concerned citizens, so you then had to defend this indefensible document in court. Only then did we learn that all the aggravation, wasted time, and squandered money arising out of this process were unnecessary. So here we are again, getting an update on the indispensable and indefensible report, and the ongoing jihad against our water company. Meanwhile, all the so-called experts at Town Hall who you promised were going to guide us smoothly through this acquisition are gone, except for the attorneys, of course. At the same time, there are hundreds of videos documenting that virtually every public works project is being performed in a careless, desultory, perfunctory, slapdash, sloppy, and sluttily manner. Of particular interest are the town's subpart handling of the wells at the golf course and the horseman center, and the massive waste of our water at these and other town properties. All the while, the town's newsletters assure us that you guys are doing a great job. And let's not forget the town's wasteful spending on the doggy Taj Mahal, the purchase and operation of the golf course, the erection of this very conference center, and many other examples. Since the start of this acquisition process, we citizens have witnessed an obliteration of the concept and practice of government transparency. The last official estimates of the financing for this project, flawed as they were, date back to April 2017. Since then, the only thing that hasn't changed is your official estimate. One of the major changes is that the town now wants to convert everyone at the water company into a government employee and add another manager at Town Hall. This will cause water payroll and pension costs to skyrocket. The town has also announced that maintenance and upgrades to the system will be financed by additional bonds on top of $150 million or so that will be required for the actual purchase. This means that the current plan is to borrow hundreds of millions of dollars to borrow to buy something we already have, increase the cost of operation, borrow more money to keep the system operational, and lower the price of water. You'd have to be insane or worse to believe this plan will work. To all outward appearances, the town is broke. Cards are closed, staff introduced, and compensation has been cut, and there seem to be no reserves, as the town has been forced to take out a three-year loan to pay its current bills. I know you're not open to suggestions, but here are mine. First, stop this process immediately and issue an apology to the water company for your hubris. Second, take a tiny fraction of the money you were going to spend on acquisition and do a forensic audit so we'll never know where our money went. We need to understand how our better way of life became a deterrent way of life.
Thank you very much. Brian Raven.
So how close do I have to be? Can everybody hear me?
Pretty close.
Yeah. Okay, so I wanted to kind of do comparison, because when I ran two years ago, and we had a candidate forum, we always kept on comparing ourselves to Missoula, Montana. Unfortunately, we've come to the conclusion of what the results were in Missoula, Montana. I wanted to go over those three points quickly. So advocates argued that the system could be purchased for $43 million, this Missoula, Montana rate. Advocates argued that the system could be purchased for $43 million, yet the final cost has compressed $105 million and could increase even more. The purchase price more than doubled advocates' estimates. Secondly, or thirdly, the city spent 20 times its legal fee budget. When the city began the takeover effort, it estimated the total legal cost of condemnation to be $400,000. But as the three-year battle worked its way through the courts, the city spent $8.5 million in legal fees associated with the takeover. There was also broken promises on rates, because when I ran two years ago, they talked about lowering water rates. Unfortunately, we know that's not going to be the case, because they publicly stated that they cannot lower water rates and take over this water system with the cost of the debt. So in Missoula, there was broken promises on rates, despite the city repeatedly claiming that the public ownership would generate savings for the city and residents. Water rates will immediately increase 6% over government ownership. This is all cited as well. I can provide you guys documents. Broken promises on bonds, just like they said, or it costs $105 million for the system, but they had to get a privately held investor bond for $140 million. So my last point is, it's a little ironic that at the end of the day, Missoula consumers will pay more to private investors under city ownership than it did when the utility was officially owned directly by private investors. So I want to make that point in Missoula. My last point I wanted to make is this chart that we were able to bring up. And this has to do with water, because it has to do with the budget of the legal fees. So the Town Apple Valley legal costs, this is the cumulative amount. What you can see is the adopted budget is a blue line.
Do you want to address the council?
Oh, sorry.
We need to, we need to.
Absolutely.
No, right here.
So the adopted budget is right here, is just a little bit over $2 million. What's reported to the public is it's a little bit under $3 million. And unfortunately, they spent over $3.1 million to BBK over the last four years, and the total cost is a little bit over $5 million that they spent in the last four years, but yet it's not reported to the public. So that bothersome to me, and that's my two cents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Richard Lawrence.
Some of us aren't as tall as others.
I'm with you.
Anyway, I have one, I have one thing. This is our version of Harry Brown's choo-choo train to nowhere, spending tons of money for no benefit to anybody. And the lawyers are sitting there fat, dumb, and happy, and just taking us to the cleaners. And I'm sorry, it's, it's money we're spending that's wasted. It's not going to save us any money for our water. It's not going to give us better boiling water. Just money going down the rattle.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselor BBK, Staff Attorney. My name is Alan Rice, and an Apple Valley resident who came to this council, a local small town, nineteen years ago from working in big government organizations in Los Angeles downtown area for about twenty-five years. As a responsible financial person with very high standards, I have informed the council that I observed hundreds of problems, which have not been resolved, particularly in the town's financial numbers and process of ten years of observation. The town manager has recognized important financial issues, but many remain unresolved, and as ever, anyone can know or even care. Why are necessary transparent treasure reports not being provided to the taxpayer account? BBK's last group had five or six attorneys in their presentation. They have their meetings running and local hours for Apple Valley taxpayers to pay. I see three persons now at the dais. What does it cost to taxpayers? The court hearing has not been set yet in 2019. This will be set to accelerate your team's power to pass rapidly without any taxpayer recourse. I question the team's credentials, and that your team includes towns, legislators, financial experts, and water experts to support numerous attorney and chief lines of youth. The turning backs of the $620,000 based on last four years, house to $5.4 million, exceeded the $2 million budget amount, and now the $10 million line of credit belonging to the town to use half the $6 million amount. Major litigation during full session agenda, with settlements costing high and unknown amounts. Several litigation attorneys are representing clients or bond. With BBK's high degree of success probability, why doesn't BBK also provide one dollar insurance? Their present debauchment before having a $15 million addition area took weeks for these people to even understand and get corrected. After a firm, the town with their attorney firm is going down a road of future conflicting financials and questionable issues. But I look forward to your commentary. Has any of you ever produced quality water from a tap? Does the Town Apple Valley Plan or RISV include minimum infrastructure maintenance, or how many miles of pipeline replacement annually?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angela Vice.
Hello. It is beyond me how anybody in the Town Apple Valley can trust the current town council. It is clear to me that either you lied to the people about your finances, or you were asleep at the wheel. And most scenarios are unacceptable. Your $10 million borrowing recklessly, now we don't know if it's four or six, or what is it? Your finances are not transparent. Your spending is wasteful. All of it's been proven. And if you think that you could run a water company better than you ran the town into the ground, God help us all. I think we need a forensic audit, and we need a new council.
And Francis Scott, my last speaker.
Yes, my name, my name is Francis Scott. I live in Apple Valley, and I hear everybody criticizing this, but you know, if we don't, you guys don't ship. Our rates are going to skyrocket. And you can be assured of it, and you need to keep on going and get this thing done. We've spent a lot of money already, and it's just wasted if you don't continue with your progress you've been making. Now, I know that this water company has been wasting money by trying to improve the water company rather than sending their money to Canada. Well, I just assumed the money we spent in Apple Valley is to be sent to Canada, and this would be, even if we made the same rates, at least the money is staying here. It's not going to Canada. And we need to be sure that when we do this, we do it right, because I personally have seen the water company leave open holes. Right next door, they left them open holes. The kid could fall in and hurt himself, because it was quitting time and they wanted to go home. I had a waterman that broke a called water company, and I was, the valve was broken. They accused me of breaking it, but it was, it was an old valve. It couldn't be fixed. They replaced it. The rudeness I got when I called the water company was fantastic. They told me I wasn't supposed to be turning off the water. That I was supposed to call the water. Well, who's going to buy the water that comes out of there before they come turn the water off? It just don't make sense. This, I see they're putting in this new well down here. This is all just a put-up front, trying to make you guys pay more money for the water company. It's not an improvement at all. I see them now, they go around in junk trucks before we started, before we started this deal with the water company. Now they're driving around in all new trucks. Well, they're just trying to make more money for themselves. This is, this is getting ridiculous. I want a fixed income. If I had to pay the same amount I have to do now, it's fine and dandy with me, because I know where I stand with the water company. I don't know where I stand.
Okay, thank you so much. We do have one more speaker. My apologies. Adolpho Kalos. Thank you very much, Adolpho. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, councilmembers. I am an Apple Valley resident and ratepayer. And just like the last gentleman said, rates continue to go up. Where does it stop? If we don't stop them, if we don't take over the water system, there's, there's no end in sight. They will continue to raise rates. People on fixed income will continue to suffer and try to make ends meet, just to wash dishes, maybe water a few trees. Liberty has shown that they're going to continue to increase interest rates for the, for the ratepayers. And I have seen PowerPoint slides where the town has shown that we can afford this. It will debt service. Debt service meaning that the revenues coming in will pay for whatever bonds that we have to borrow. So it can work, and I think you really have to continue to push and get us through to the finish line. So we know the debt service, we know that the, will not be more rate hikes. We may not decrease if we can. I know that you will decrease rates if it's there, but we have to stop the bleeding. So that's my two cents, and keep fighting, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the last of our public comment cards, so thank you again for everybody speaking. This time, I would like to introduce Doug Barbasin, our town manager, who's going to, I guess, take some introductions and some comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to remind you real quick, that the purpose of this meeting isn't for a debate. It's not a Q and A session. It's strictly to provide information to the public. I've been the town manager now for a little over nine months, and by far, the number one question I get is what's the status? Where are we going? What's happening? What's, what's the latest kind of information? So today, we have with us three attorneys, Professor Best and Krieger, Thomas Rice, who's going to provide an overview, Charity Schiller, who will talk about the sequel case that concluded this year, and then Kendrick Bay, who's litigation counsel, who will talk at least a little bit about the next steps. Keeping in mind, we are in active litigation at this point, so we have to be somewhat guarded with the information that we share. So appreciate everybody coming out. And with that, I will turn it over to Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Barbasin. Good evening there. I'm the city councilman. We really do appreciate all the info that you're giving tonight, whether it's for or against, you know, what's good for us today. Thank you. So let me, let me get started. Can we turn the lights down? Nobody wants to listen to me. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to give a brief. So I'm the assistant town attorney, Thomas Rice. I'm going to give a brief overview. And then I'm going to pass it over to Charity Schiller, who's one of our sequel attorneys. She'll provide an overview of the sequel case, alack resolve, to Kendrick Bay, who are litigation and domain counsel. He can talk about the progress on the case and over going next. So first we now want to cover is the background, the history of concern, of concern in the community, and rate increases that the town has been put through, and then discuss some of the current matters before the California Public Utilities Commission. And then I'll describe the process to date before turning over to Charity, the environmental compliance and Kendrick Bay, which is discussion. So the history of concern in the community. Community has long voiced concern about rising water rates within the town, and has expressly raised those concerns in town. So that's what this process started. The town has in the past allocated significant resources to fight in rate hikes before the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission. While there has been some significant victories in that process, as most residents, certainly all ratepayers, will understand, the rates have continued to increase despite that fight. The ownership of Apple Valley Water System has transitioned a number of times in recent years from hedge funds based in DC to now international utility conglomerates based in Canada. I'm going to go through some of the materials that we showed when the town council adopted the resolution in the CESTI, which is what would kick-start this, this whole process off, and the eminent case off. This was a, this chart is from a state audit by the California State. They did a disposition in April earlier of 2015, and it shows the difference in the rates between the private water providers in the town and the public water providers in nearby communities. As you can see, the cost in dollars per unit for each unit of water is significantly higher than in the public, public water providers. This is the rate comparison provided at the time of the resolution in the CESTI. Unfortunately, it's not really easy to see the bottom line on this, which is as a percentage of the cost of average residence usage at that time, which was about 1,700 cubic feet a month. The city of Apple Valley Ranchers was 183% more expensive than Hesperia, 165%, sorry, the cost of Bigville, and 124% of the cost of Golden State Water. Next, I'm going to show some of the applications. These are the applications filed before the CPUC for rate increases. And you can see, starting here with the 2002 application, running all the way to the most recent 2018 application. This is what the water company has asked for. It's gone to, gone to the California Utilities Commission and asked for in terms of rate increases. As you can see, each time, it's significant, has a real impact on all group people's bills, what they're asking for. They don't always get what they ask for, but they verbally get an increase. Let me just go back a little bit. I just want to, so here's a little bit of information. This was also provided at our last town board meeting. This was, this assumes that the resident uses around 200 cubic feet, 100 cubic feet of water each, yeah, 300 ccm, which is 100 cubic feet, so use of water annually. It looks at the, what, how a rate increase would be for those users over each, over each decision. So you can see the 2002 application that was decided in 2003, the impact on rates for somebody using that average amount of water at the time. It was 24.6% increase in 2015. 2005, sorry, it was a 13.1% increase. 2008, 16.7% increase. 2019, 19.9% increase. And keep in mind, this just shows the increase in the base cost of water. This does include the number of surcharges that those ratepayers will see on their bills, which includes the revenue, the water revenue reconciliation mechanism. Does include low income balance, or balance accounts, or over surcharges that the water companies charge for that to that. So I'll talk, flag a little bit, this is new information since the last time we came before to public. This is the results of the 2014 application, and this was the decision that was issued in 2015. And the adopted revenue requirement increase for 2015 was 25.27%. That's how much CPUC said the water company's revenue needs to increase by in the next year. That's how much CPUC said, uh, the water company's revenue needs to increase by in the next year. Uh, and CPUC, you see, in, in that decision acknowledged that a residential customer who is maintaining water consumption at the same levels before the average customer would see a bill increase of seventeen dollars and nineteen cents a month, which equates to two hundred and six dollars every year for every customer who maintains an average amount of water use at the time. Uh, the rate, rate of return, this is essentially the, the return on investment, uh, that the water company receives. Uh, in the most, most recent application was filed earlier this year. They indicated that the rate of return for 2016 was nine point two eight percent. We expect the rate of return for 2017 will be even higher. Uh, the authorized rate of return at this time, think about what kinds of investments you have and whether you can get this kind of benefit. The authorized rate of return is nine point zero seven percent, or what was at this time. This chart is also, this is also new information. It's pulled from, uh, the annual reports, which the water company files with CPUC every year. And the report looks at the total revenue that Liberty reported receiving that last year and the total number of units of water, total CCF, a hundred cubic feet that they sold. And basically says for each unit of water, how many dollars did they bring in? And so as you can see from this chart, from 2000 to 2017, the revenue per unit of water, same unit of water you're getting, they're pulling in a significant amount monthly every year. And I think you'll agree, we're at trends in that direction. So there's a couple of active CPUC matters I wanna talk about firstly. First one is the cost of capital application. This one, and it's my memory is the first time made, will actually decrease rates as a result of applications to the CPUC. Uh, this was filed on May 1st this year, uh, and Liberty Utilities is advertising this, advertise the public classification hearing list, which is your one opportunity to go to the CPUC really, uh, argue or talk to them.
You can help, okay?
I'm sorry, the public classification hearing on this matter was held in Los Angeles, which tells you it's fairly difficult sometimes for a resident in the town to get there. Uh, but being the proposal here, we can't really fault the list to reduce, uh, the rate, the rate of return, nine point zero seven percent to eight point four one seven. They may end up setting a lower number, which will be an additional decrease in the rates. But at present, the estimate is based on the eight point four one percent is a reduction in bills of forty-one dollars fifty-eight cents annually. If you keep in mind, the last rate increase resulted in a two hundred dollar increase for average users, this is, this doesn't help that much. And I'll, I'll explain even the current application might influence the rest. So this is second see, active CPUC matter, a matter that hasn't been as well advertised as a rate reduction. Uh, this is their 2018 application, uh, for rates that will be effective on January 1st, 2019. This application is still being processed and it is still fighting over these rates with the office of ratepayer advocates. Their proposal, and what they've asked for, is a four point two percent increase, four point two six percent increase in 2019, a five point one two percent increase in 2020, and a three point six nine percent increase in 2021. And now this is for the average residential customer, and I'm putting average in quotes there because this reflects a decrease in use by every resident. Uh, and they would, they will tell you it's because of conservation. Uh, I think a lot of ratepayers here will understand it's because of tiny hotels. Um, and the, the average customer using twenty-three point eleven CCF every two months, the annual increase will be thirty-seven dollars in 2019, forty-one dollars in 2020, and another thirty dollars in 2021. And keep in mind, that's at the lower level of usage. That's what we've got to look forward to CPUC approves our request. Um, there is an opportunity to argue against this, and you'll have an opportunity next week, October 25th. They are holding a public classification hearing here in the town. I believe in this building, in this, in this very, this very group, there'll be a hearing at 1:00 PM. Another hearing at 6:00 PM, um, right here in this room. Uh, I recommend if you are concerned about your water rates, this would be an option to come out and tell the CPUC right then and there what your concerns are and why. Uh, you'll notice this hasn't been advertised much by the water company. There hasn't been advertised much by the CPUC, and this is because this was a rate increase, not a rate increase. The outreach on the water company's website right now for community, not for community events, they haven't announced for their October 10 public classification hearing in LA on the cost of capital. Nothing that I find at least, I'm fairly good at using the internet, but I'm not perfect, so, there would be, uh, is check back soon. So this, the water company hasn't made an attempt yet, as far as I'm aware, to make the customers aware that there's an opportunity to provide feedback to the CPUC. So over the weekend, I did a little bit of a rate comparison of my own. Uh, this, this is just looking at one particular user, and I'm assuming a use of sixteen hundred cubic feet a month, which is the rounded down figure of what the average was when we started this process. So I recognize the current average use of the low list, uh, and I, I think that it was all residents tightening their belts. Uh, Liberty, as I mentioned, would claim it's all due to conservation. Uh, I, I took a look at the service charges for the water company, the city of Hesperia, and the city of Bigville. And I did a little bit of math. And I came to the conclusion that if somebody was using sixteen CCF a month, which works out a hundred ninety-two CCF annually, they'd have a bill total, this excludes surcharges, excludes the, the tax on the water bill as a, as a listener of the private water company that are not charged on these public ones, so the difference is probably a little bit more. For that average user in my mind, the water bill would be one thousand dollars a year, over one thousand dollars a year. For the city of Hesperia, that amount drops to four hundred and seventy dollars a year. And for the city of Bigville, that increase there was so slightly higher than Hesperia's, to five hundred and forty dollars a year. But as you can see, that's a significant difference in the, the water bills a resident's paying when a family makes a decision where to locate, this, this kind of thing comes in. So finally, I'm gonna touch on the process today. Uh, in 2015, uh, we conducted an appraisal of the system. Uh, we offered, made a fair market value offer to the water company, and they declined. They've made no attempt to come to the negotiating table to opt for sale, though. At the time we took focus, when we started the process, they were a very different company. So they said it's not for sale and it's solid, uh, which, you know, you can believe what they want. In November 17, 2015, the town council adopted a resolution necessity and certified the EIR. On December 16, the water company sued the town over its EIR, claiming it was insufficient. So when you hear individuals claiming shouldn't have done the EIR, even the EIR we did, which is the highest level, there's not a big one, I'll let Charity talk about it. Then December 21st, we received a notice of intent for measure B, that was the measure that imposed on the town. Council had requirement if they were gonna issue debt of more than ten million dollars, they would have to go to a further people, very clearly in terms of slowing down this process. In January 2016, the town filed its eminent domain complaint. In early 2016, the town prepared a secret administrative record. In mid-2016, measure B qualified, and the town placed both measure B and measure W repeating town initiative on the ballot. Measure B and W in June, in November of that year, both obtained over fifty percent of the vote because measure B received more votes, measure B became a draw, so the town canceled. Because in that, that town was in a position where it had to submit a lot of voters in order to be sure whether we even get to a point where we could win the case, and then had to go to a vote, whereas always, always risk, as I know you all the time. So the town was in a position. In 2017, uh, sequel action was delayed due to a motion to overturn the sequel record on parts of the water company. In March 2017, the town council placed measure X on the ballot, requesting authorization to a hundred and fifty million dollars in revenue bonds for the process of applying the system, should we be successful. Uh, mid to late 2017, we had a briefing under Sequo, in that case. And December 14th, we had the sequel hearing before the judge. February 2018, we received a favorable ruling from the judge saying, yes, you are going to repay under Sequo, which, and finally dismissing the case of the water company. In May 2018, uh, the water company agreed not to appeal the sequel suit, which resulted in more, um, fees for the town and appeal. In agreement, in exchange, we waived twenty-three thousand dollars in costs. Uh, then, at present, 2018, the discovery, the eminent domain case are ongoing, and we have a standard, you can, you can describe in more detail. At this time, I'm gonna pass the mic over to Charity Schiller, who's a town sequel attorney, uh, to give you a report on the sequel case and a little bit more detail on that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charity Schiller. As Thomas said, my area of practice is the California Environmental Quality Act. So for those of you who are not familiar with Sequo, that's what it stands for, is the California Environmental Quality Act. And what it requires is that before public agencies approve projects, before they approve actions that may have environmental impacts, they have an obligation to take a look at what those environmental impacts may be. And so, um, the town did that with regard to the acquisition. And just in terms of what that timeline looks like, there were notices of preparation released in the summer of 2015. So this is one of the multiple notices that the town released to tell the public that, hey, we're planning to air an environmental impact report. Uh, give us your comments, give us your feedback, let us know what your concerns are, and we will address them through the environmental impact process. Um, there were a number of notices that were released thereafter. Ultimately, the town council is certified EIR at a notice public meeting in November of 2018, and the town was promptly sued for alleged violations of the California Environmental Quality Act. Um, it was a relatively lengthy litigation process, at which point the court entered a judgment denying the written mandate. What that means is the town won the Sequo litigation, and, um, that ruling was not appealed. As Thomas mentioned, there was a relatively, um, brief settlement agreement, which the town entered into to confirm that the ruling would not be appealed in exchange for the waiver of costs. So let's talk a little bit about what the purpose behind that environmental impact report, behind that EIR was. So all along, the, the water company had confirmed that it was opposed to the town's process, that, um, no amount of sequel review currently was going to be sufficient to address the acquisition. And there were assertions made on the record, someone who were at the meeting where this occurred, that the water company would challenge the town council at each and every step of the way. So, um, the town council was aware that no matter how much environmental review was done, litigation was a distinct and probable occurrence. And it was with that in mind that the EIR was prepared. In part two, the council was trying to be responsive to the members of the public committee on board and raise concerns and, and mention questions about how the acquisition would work and what it might look like. So the environmental impact report was a detailed document that was able to answer and address many of those questions. One of the, um, one of the goals of that EIR was also to provide a detailed level of Sequo analysis that was consistent with the town's view of the water company's more recent acquisition of the Yerma Water Company. So for those of you who don't recall what that is, Yerma Water System is located out in eastern San Bernardino County. It has a very few connections, just a few hundred people. And there was a proposal by the water company to acquire the Yerma system and to immediately move forward with several million dollars of physical improvements to that system. The town asked the question to the California Public Utilities Commission, hey, why aren't you doing Sequo analysis for this? There's millions of dollars of physical improvements that are going to be brought forward. And ultimately, the California Public Utilities Commission, with the water company's currents, decided that no sequel was needed, that it was just a title transfer, and hey, there's, there's no reason to undertake environmental review. The town believed and continuously believed that that acquisition really should have undergone Sequo review at some level. But that unfortunately did not happen. That's one of the reasons why for the town council, it's important to look at acquisition. Because when decisions are made that involve the water system, they will be subject to more rigorous environmental review. So ultimately, the Sequo process is intended to provide public transparency, and that's what an EIR process does. It provides multiple notices, it provides detailed discussion and analysis so that the public can get a good look at what the action going forward really involves. So we have some quotes here, and you will recall, I gave a presentation to the town council addressing what the, the process looks like. Certainly, it is the town's decision as the lead agency to decide what level of environmental review is included. And they decided that to provide the most public transparency to the public, they would prepare an environmental impact report. In part, that decision was driven by cost considerations. So given the water company's assurance that it would challenge the town council every step of the way, um, the town council wanted to make sure that whatever, um, that whatever process was taken for, for Sequo compliance purposes was thorough, it was careful, it was well documented, and that it had a chance of being upheld when litigation's filed. And I say when, not if, because of the assurances of the water company. I think one of the questions, um, in terms of cost consideration is, well, could the litigation have been avoided? We don't think that that would be the case. We don't think the answer to that question is yes. Given that the water company assured the town that it would be challenging everything the town did, and given that the water company challenged even the environmental impact report process, the idea that the town would have foregone Sequo entirely and been able to avoid litigation. Will you come to the mic, Bob?
No, no, you're, just a little closer.
So, um, moving forward, let's talk about what happened. So we get to court, and the water company did challenge, the EIR said it was not good enough. The arguments made by the water company were that the town's process for preparing the EIR was improper, that town staff, in a sense, should have prepared the EIR directly, or at least directly under a contract to the town. There were arguments that the town's efforts to utilize a publications firm to get information out to the townspeople and just keep the public apprised of what was going on, that those activities somehow constituted a red commitment. And there was an argument that, um, that the, the town should have prepared a more detailed operations plan, something that would have been difficult for the town to undertake, if not possible, until and unless the town actually had acquisition of the system to kind of take a look at what was needed. In response, the town argued, of course, that its EIR process was more than sufficient and completely complied with Sequo. And the town also argued that, you know, really, this is a paper transaction. It is the transfer of title from a private water company to a public agency of existing system that is already rebuilt and is already operational. Under Sequo, those types of transactions are typically found exempt from an EIR requirement because it is the continued operation of an existing system. So ultimately, the court's ruling, which came down in February of this year, seems like it was longer ago than that, but it was not, it was in February of this year. The court agreed that an exemption was appropriate, that this really is the continued operation of an existing system. The town council did not propose or approve any changes to the system. And so the court didn't even need to get to whether the EIR was adequate or not. The court was satisfied with the town's sequel process as being exempt. Finally, um, with regard to the trial courting, of course, as with any trial courting, there's always the opportunity for potential appeal. And, um, again, the, the town council wanted us to try to spare expense, to conserve resources. And so its settlement was reached, wherein the water company agreed not to appeal the sequel ruling, which means the town's, the decision in the town's paper stands. And in exchange, the town would waive approximately twenty-three thousand dollars in costs. As you can imagine, the cost of going through an appeal, or the, of the attorney's fees that would be incurred in going through an appeal process would be many, many, many times that. So again, another effort by the town to preserve, to conserve costs in that regard. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Kendrick May to talk about the acquisition part.
Good evening, my name is Kendrick May. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the combination trial itself, the combination process. Uh, Charity indicated, uh, we've gone to a secret hearing process, and that was the focus. As Charity indicated, we have gone to a secret hearing process, and that was the focus of the proceedings altogether, was the secret process. And now we're going to be focusing on the actual proceeding process. And both sides have been engaged in extensive discovery, with some depositions, anticipate that a number of depositions by both sides are going to be ramped up considerably in the next few months. We've had document demands and subpoenas, literally thousands and thousands of pages of documents have been produced by both sides, and also thousands of pages of documents have been produced by third parties, including various companies that have been associated with the, with Liberty or with the predecessor here, Liberty. We anticipate that there will be more documents, and that will be in this process. One of the things that we recently, most recently went through was what we, I think Thomas referred to as a standard review here. We had this hearing in August. And this is something that was briefed very extensively by both sides regarding what is the, what is the court supposed to look at? What kind of standard of review is the court supposed to look at determining whether there is a right to acquire the system? The company has challenged the town's right to acquire the system. This is a process by which it asserts those challenges, and in the case of utility condemnations, it is, there is a rebuttable presumption in favor of the, of the acquisition in terms of what are called a public interest in necessity. What that means is that under statute, there is a burden of proofers on the utility to rebut those presumptions. And we also agree to brief the court on how that determination of rebuttal is to be handled under the appropriate standard of review. The matter has been under submission for a while, and still have not gotten a decision from the court, and we're waiting a decision from the court. And that decision may affect how the case unfolds. If it goes one way, the length and the trial and the number of witnesses that may be produced may be more extensive, and if it goes another way, it may be less extensive. We have a, our next case management conference with the court is September, I mean, let's excuse me, late November, and we will be talking about a trial date at that time. We anticipate that the trial will be set for sometime in two thousand and nineteen. And in fact, the decision by the court on standard review may very well affect the length of the trial. The council for Liberty has indicated that the trial may be as long as three, four days. That translates to about six weeks of trial in reality. If the court issues a decision of the way the town would like it, it's possible that time may be short, that remains to be seen. Once the right to take trial is completed, the judge who issue a decision will decide whether in fact there is the right to acquire the, the system. And assuming that the court finds that irremittable presumptions in favor of the acquisition are, are not in fact rebutted, then the next phase will be the valuation phase. I should mention that the determination on the right to acquire the system is a judge trial, that is not a jury trial. But that is not the case with the valuation phase. Valuation phase is going to take, will require a jury trial and will occur some months after the right to take trial. We anticipate that it will take a little bit of time for the judge to issue this decision, and it will take some time then after the reviewing decision to proceed and set the right to take trial. In both trials, as you mentioned, it is anticipated that there will be, in any case, live testimony, there will be expert testimony, there will be testimony, especially in the valuation case, that will be very intensely oriented towards expert testimony. After that process is completed, the jury comes in for verdict, and that's the end of the process. And at that point, the town may receive the acquisition of the system.
Thank you very much, and especially Madam President. Thank you.
First, I'll remind everybody, there are no questions at this time. Any thoughts or comments that we might have for our town council? We'll start with the young lady, tomorrow, Barbara.
Thank you very much. It's great to see you here this evening to receive this update. And the old saying goes, it's coming right from the horse's mouth. I mean, these are the, these are the head folks here that are leading us in this battle, and we appreciate you very much giving us this update. I'm happy that I get to be here. As many of you know, I'm retiring, and I just wish that I would be here through the fruition of this and what I perceive, hope it's a success for our community.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry. Scott.
Thank you for coming, Barbara, and thanks for the update. I know we've been waiting for this for a long time, but a lot of things happening in between. I did ask the public to try to update it, but a lot of things are in the court's hands, and the timeframes and the judgments are kind of out of our hands. We'll try to do as quick as possible. Be as efficient and recover revenues as possible in this process, knowing that it will come out in the end. There was a question I had to ask, I know it was brought up, but it talked about if we weren't going through this process, where would the rates be and what would be happening to our community? And I, I did get an email from CPUC about the rates that you talked about that they are going to be next, on the twenty-fifth right here, and we said about the rate decreases here in Apple Valley, and they quoted to almost eleven point five percent or more over the next three years. I think it was seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand one year, nine hundred and forty-four, one point five, one point two million per total, almost three million dollar increase in revenues over a three-year period. But I did, and also on there, there was the Yarmouth. That was brought up too, that they didn't include the Yarmouth. We thought to exclude Yarmouth out of the purchase around the valley, and were successful, but they also rate the piece there. And they're looking at the first year, eighty point two four percent twenty nineteen.
How much?
Eighty point two percent, twelve point four hundred percent the next year, and then seven point five, eight percent twenty twenty-one per total, hundred percent, hundred point twenty-eight, hundred percent point two eight. I thought that was pretty, pretty crazy. And that would have been falling on, on our residents to pay for that, not just Yarmouth, but I mean, they don't have the resources to, to, I guess, to augment that. I'm not sure how that's going to happen, I mean, what's going to happen with four folks in Yarmouth, a hundred percent increase. They did, in that case, complication does, asked for a six-year implementation of fifteen percent per year, so they don't get a full eighty percent one year, so it's spread out a little bit. But still, I thought that was, that was kind of shocked me there a little bit, and kind of thought, if we weren't in this process right now, where would be, we'd be on some of those rate decreases moving forward. And hopefully, we're successful, and I appreciate all the help and updates. But it is, it is a tough fight, it's a day and a night fight. I always mention that we don't have the resources necessarily behind us if the water company does, but we're going to continue that as long as we can, and hopefully, we're successful. Thank you, thank you for the, thanks for putting this together. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, I just wanted to make sure. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here, that's great, I love it. This is online, this will be posted eventually, this whole procedure, so if you want to review some of the information or hear the attorneys again, you'll be able to do that. And I think the presentation kind of speaks for itself. I think you can see the frustration that I have by looking at these numbers and what's going on to our community. And I think, I think this was great to have, just so you can see exactly where we're at and where we're coming from, despite some of the comments and things that are made. We have to be strong in this position, and I think this council is strong, and I'm going to do whatever I can to help this move along, like some of those comments. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pass it back to you, and...
I just wanted, wanted to thank everybody for coming out. We've had a lot of comments of just where we're at, where the update is. This is just information for everybody to preview, to know where the process is. I want to thank everybody for coming out, you know, and speaking to us tonight and listening to, listening to what we have to say. I was saying, and your group, thank you for coming out, appreciate you giving our community the information. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Couple of things real quick. Barb, you're absolutely right. One, we're going to miss you, but two, we wish you were here to fight the fight. And I know you wish you were going to be here to fight the fight for many years, but we're going to continue anyway. Scott, I want to thank you for bringing up the, the Yarmouth information and the fact that, you know, we are here in Apple Valley for the people of Apple Valley to protect them. They have been challenging the rates for many, many years. We have won some, we've lost some, and it finally came to a point that we need, we need the council, what we need to do. And Scott, I thought your, your Yarmouth question and your tough fight comments were just exactly what this community needed to hear. Current, stay in the course, and that's exactly what this council has done, as one of the community members said before. We, we took this challenge on because we knew it's what the people of this community wanted, it's what the people of this community needed, not only today, but for tomorrow. And so we're staying the course. And Larry, you're absolutely right. I think our attorneys have done a great review, and at this time, I would like to thank BB and Kay, all three of our experts in secret. I want to thank you, Charity, you did a great job out there with you in the courtroom. I thought you did a great job. And Ken, you, we're, we're going to be there for you, Ken. We're going to be supporting you a hundred percent of the way. And at this time, I would like to turn back to our town manager and see, Doug, if you have any closing comments.
Not any comments necessarily, but just let the public know that once we have some more information, if the judge sets a trial date, hopefully, the member will know that as soon as we know that information, we'll, of course, let the public know about that, that at least we're anticipating the next news to be, unless there's a surprise. That's all I have.
I'm expecting more. Oh, I turned my mic off, I was expecting more, sorry. Well, on behalf of, oh, I have to, on behalf of the Apple Valley Town Council, we want to thank you all for coming out and sharing your comments and your thoughts for the speakers that stood up and said, thank you so much, right or wrong, we understand your passion, but we want to thank you so much for coming out, and we'll continue keeping this community, our community, updated as we continue with the courts. And Charity, you've done a great job. And Ken, we expect you to come on back and tell the community how you're doing, because this community wants to know, this is extremely important. They passed a measure by fifty-eight point something percentage, and we're, it's our job to answer that part of the community, and the majority of the community wants this new report. Thank you very much.